Flag and our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sowing the seeds of peace comes from the Old Testament. Plant goodness, harvest the fruit of loyalty, plow the new ground of knowledge. Want to see a miracle? Plant a word of love heart deep in a person's life. Nurture it with a smile and a prayer and watch what happens. An employee gets a compliment, a wife receives flowers, a cake is baked and carried to a neighbor, a widow hugged, an attendant at a store is honored, a preacher is praised. Sowing seeds of peace is like sowing beans. You don't know why it works, you just know it does. Seeds are planted and top soils of hurt are shoved away. Don't forget the principle, never underestimate the power of a seed. Heavenly Father, in these stressful times, please help us to reach out to each other and see God's goodness in everyone. Guide the county commission this morning as we do the business of the people of Finy County. We ask these blessings through your son Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you and welcome to the Finy County Commission meeting on February the first with sort of a new array of where the county commissioners are sitting. I have a gavel here that our GIS employee head man by the name of Trey Phillips, who crochets did for me, it's a little soft to get your attention, but we'll put that up there as a place of honor. Also, we want to lay out the position of this board to be transparent, open as much as we can and so on. So with that, let's start our meeting and we first, I would entertain a motion regarding our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
Chairman, Dr. Clifford, I see that we have the corrected CD BG reports. And I'm wondering, as we have many loans outstanding because of the COVID loan opportunity, if maybe we could have a report more frequently from them. I know some of the people who borrowed aren't required to pay yet, but I am concerned that there may be delinquencies and other issues that we should keep on top of. So I'm wondering if that could be maybe quarterly. We don't require the presence of the folks here, but I'd just like to recommend that be a quarterly report.
Commissioner, appreciate your comments. With a motion and a second, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Now the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion also carries. Public comment time and I'm going to lay out a rule or two. A public comment has been traditional is limited to five minutes. At any point, if it becomes disruptive or if it challenges the integrity of employees, this is not the format or the place for that to come forth. That's there are other ways to handle that. Also, this is only for topics not on the agenda. So with that said, do we have anybody who has a desire to offer a public comment? You have five minutes, Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you. My name is Roger Bradshaw. I'm the pastor of Mount Zion Church, an African-American farmer of the fourth generation. My family homesteaded ground in Hodgman County in eighteen, under the 1862 Homestead Act and still farms out there today. I'm here to report to this community that I've lived here since 1992, 28 years, and this community persecutes churches and discriminates against African-American farmers. Your county appraisers department targeted Mount Zion Church, saying it was not exclusively holding religious services on its property and told me and my family that agricultural ground owned by my family was not meeting the county appraisers department's interpretation of their agricultural use. They designated the entire acreage as vacant lots, reversed itself, and returned 42 acres to agricultural ground and recorded 14 acres best used residential. Both of these blatant discriminatory and targeted acts took place at the same time and when appealed to the Board of Tax Appeals, they, the Board of Tax Appeals, found that the county appraisers office violated the statutes governing oversight of churches and governing oversight of agricultural ground. The ruling of the Board of Tax Appeals was given to this entire board via email Wednesday, January 27th of last week. There's a word on the wall behind you, integrity, which means equality of being honest and having strong moral principles and moral uprightness. This is not the first time this community persecuted a church, I pastor, it is a second. This is not the first time we asked the county appraisers why our African-American farmers being designated best used residential and our white neighbor who has four homes on his property was not. Integrity, equality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness. I brought the concerns I'm expressing to you today to the county appraisers office and to Mr. Robert Reese, requesting 15 minutes to speak to the county commissioners about this targeting. It was told by Mr. Reese, the chairman of this board, Mr. Dave Jones, would make the determination about how much time I would be allowed to speak. I have spoken to the Finy County Commissioners on numerous occasions in the past and never had a problem getting on the agenda or being allocated 15 minutes to speak until now. Mr. Dave Jones, after speaking with Mr. Reese, determined I would not be granted 15 minutes to present the entirety of the evidence I have regarding targeting of Mount Zion and discriminatory practices of the county appraisers office. The emails regarding these conversations were also sent to each of the county commissioners on this board last week. After communication with the governor's office by myself, an investigation was opened by the Kansas Department of Revenue as direct governing authority of the county appraisers office regarding a targeting of Mount Zion and our farm. That investigation is ongoing. I'm asking the board, if it has the integrity to do the right thing and open independent investigation of this department's practices as the county appraiser reports to Mr. Reese and Mr. Reese reports to this board. If Mr. Reese investigates this department, it will be a whitewash. As he, Mr. Reese, directs this department, I am still requesting 15 minutes to present the evidence to the county appraisers abusive targeted acts and requesting an independent investigation of possible ongoing discriminatory activities of the county appraisers office.
Thank you. Have any other statement?
No, sir.
I'll make this offer to you if you would like to meet with our county council and our county administrator and the chairman of the board, myself, in the next week or so, we'll be happy to meet with you and listen to your grievance. As again, as I indicated to you in emails, the county commission is without much authority to direct the activities of the assessment process. That's directed out of Topeka, so, but we'll be, we'll be more than happy to meet with you if that would be agreeable and listen. And then if this needs to be taken to an agenda item, we can consider that. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. What I would request is the entire board be present.
Well, then we have to invite the press and I think you were wanting to talk a little bit about some things that are confidential by their very nature and by law. So I will not have the entire board there.
Is there, can I poll the board? Is the board agreeable? I mean, I find it amazing that the people who represent this county are being set aside and the board is not allowed to be there present.
If you don't mind, sir, I'm going to briefly interrupt you and ask our county council to come to the microphone, would you please? And explain, please, in the legalese, the position I'm trying to advocate here.
Yes, according to the Kansas Open Records Act and the Kansas Open Meetings Act, whenever there is a concern about county personnel or perhaps a legal matter that may be potential and ongoing, then the discussions regarding that would be brought to a private meeting. That private meeting would occur with myself, as Mr. Jones just stated, the head of the commission and the county administrator. And that is governed by state law. So that is what he is offering me to go to the next step. And there may be other procedures after this speech, but that is the next step to address your concerns.
Thank you. So the offer, I'm sorry, the offer stands and if you would like to take us up on that offer, please call, call the county administrator's office, speak with Mr. Reese and we'll try to accommodate everybody's schedule and get us together.
I am agreeable to that, Mr. Reese and Mr. Jones, thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, moving on, any other public comments, any other item not on the agenda?
Good morning. My name is Jeff Carrier. I'm the new president and CEO of St. Catherine and Bob Wilson Hospital. Wanted to give a quick update on our COVID-19 pandemic response, but before I do that, I want to introduce myself and tell you a little bit about me. I'm a Kansas native. I was born and raised in Wichita, Kansas, but graduated from Emporia High. I've been in healthcare for almost 30 years. I started my healthcare career in the Army back in 1990 as a combat medic. I was in the Gulf War and Somalia as well as Bosnia. I was in the Army for about eight years. I spent 22 years in the private sector. I've worked in healthcare for several different large health systems across the Midwest, spent a little time in the South. I'm married, I've been married for 28 years. I have three children. I have a son in college, a freshman in college. I have a daughter who's a sophomore in high school. Then I have another daughter who's in middle school. I'm very happy to be back in Kansas, especially here in Finy County and Garden City. I love Kansas and it's good to be home. Quick update on our COVID-19 readiness. Our hospitals maintain a very high level of readiness to ensure our patients in the community receive the care they expect and deserve from us. Our COVID inpatient numbers over the past three weeks have significantly declined. In November and December, we are averaging an average daily census of 14 to 16 patients, but over the past three weeks, they've declined by about 50 to 60 percent. Two weeks ago, our average daily census of COVID patients was six and last week it was four. We continue to maintain plenty of physical capacity to meet our community needs. We have a dedicated COVID unit. It's a 32-bed unit with 16 beds that are isolation rooms. As far as supplies go, we've not had an interruption in our supply chain. We continue to have plenty of essential PPE. We continue to conduct 24/7 screening of all of our employees and visitors. We have five or six dedicated full-time people that are there 24/7, making sure that we screen patients, ask them questions like, are you short of breath? Have you had a fever? Have you been in contact with anybody that has had COVID? We also have an internal helping hands program that we've had in place for about four months at the hospitals. This allows employees at the hospitals to sign up to help critical departments that are maybe short-staffed. To date, we are averaging anywhere from 120 to 140 hours of volunteer time from our employees helping these critically, critical areas in our hospital. Our visitor policy has not changed since the pandemic began. It remains at one visitor per patient. We do not allow any visitors for our COVID patients. We do allow one visitor for those patients that are going through the dying process or who are getting ready to deliver a baby. As far as vaccinations, 53% of our staff have received the vaccination either from Pfizer or Moderna. We have our last employee vaccination clinic scheduled for February 5th. We've got about 80 people signed up to go through that. And then we've been working with the local health department and other area healthcare providers to coordinate vaccinations for Finy and Grant County. Any questions that you might have for me?
I personally appreciate your partnership and your hospital. I happen to take, make use of that with a little episode with COVID and I was more than impressed with particularly some people that I dealt with from Denver, I think, or they were from Colorado, but they were very, very, very professional. So, welcome to Garden City and we appreciate the partnership between St. Catherine and Finy County.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeff, do you have, are you able to obtain all the vaccine you desire? Is that a problem?
It has been a slow process. We're relying on the state to provide all the vaccinations. And I believe that most of the vaccinations will be going through our local health departments for vaccination of the general community.
You're not able to source them through your association with your outfit?
We have been able to get vaccinations for our own employees. Like I said, we vaccinate about 53 to 54% of our employees and have another vaccination campaign scheduled for February 5th. Right now, that's all the vaccinations we have in the local hospitals.
Thank you. Welcome.
Bill?
Jeff, Dr. Clifford, nice to meet you. I wonder if maybe your helping hands folks could help us out at the fairgrounds. I know there's been publicity to that effect, but having been there, I haven't seen the hospital participation yet. So I would look forward to that in our effort to vaccine, vaccinate as many people as possible.
Anything else? Yep, appreciate your attendance today. You're welcome to stay here and again, welcome to Garden City. Kind of last call, anyone else with a public comment? If not, we'll move on on our agenda. The next item listed is old business and I'm not aware of any old businesses. Is there anything that needs to come before the board? And we'll move on to the business items and it says spark, so we must have Jeff somewhere. Jeff Stevens, are you on the line?
He is there, give us one second.
He's here. I can see you, so. Morning, Jeff. Well, if you don't want to talk to us, we can talk to Julianne.
I don't know that they can hear us.
Oh, okay.
We do have sound.
Can you hear us, Finy County?
Yeah, yeah, but we're getting feedback. Getting feedback somehow.
All right. You might have to mute Dory's computer.
We can hear you, Jeff.
I can hear you too, Commissioner.
All right. Yours.
Hello?
Pardon?
I got you. I can hear you.
You can go ahead and with your presentation, we're all waiting, so.
Okay, great. Good morning, Commissioners, it's good to hear you again. Couple things overall before I turn it over to Julianne. Still working with the state of Kansas to try and understand how the emergency rental assistance grant might impact some of what we're going to talk about with the HHR to see if there's going to be additional state money that comes out from there. In terms of this part, we're still on our bypass, the closeout. We have a report due next Wednesday that we're working with the team internally to deal with. And we're also helping with the closeout of the SERD grant. Robert sent over a webinar for tomorrow and will be signed up for that to make sure that we close that grant out effectively as well. Having any questions on those quick updates? I wanted to dedicate the garden of our time to talk about, have Julianne talk about the HHR program and the new web app that's going to go, that's live today so that we can continue that program and support the community.
Any questions? They're all shaking their head no, so go right ahead.
Okay, Julianne, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Morning, Julianne. Are you able to hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, I just need some assistance to share my screen. It says I'm disabled.
I didn't understand.
She's trying to share a screen and.
Okay.
There we go, thank you. All right, so there is a new webpage on the Finy County website that launched this morning. It is finicounty.org/hhr. HHR standing for the Household Emergency Relief Grant Program. So this is the go-to site for all Finy County residents that are interested in applying to the HHR program. You can see here on the screen that it has a great feature of being able to be translated from Google for those who need assistance with language translation right at the top on the left. But just to do a quick overview, it includes eligibility requirements, the required documents that are needed to apply, and then here is the link to apply online. For those in the community that are having, either have trouble applying online or they would like some assistance in person, they can email hhr@finicounty.org or call the phone number listed here so that they can get assistance to schedule an appointment in person to go ahead and apply with some help. Program applications are open today and they will be accepted, processed and awarded in the order they are received. The maximum award per applicant is $10,000. This is the same as the last round of the Finy HHR program. And here's just some information about the program. We also here have a step-by-step process. So each applicant can come through and see kind of what happens first, second, third, fourth. Just a brief overview, the very first thing that an applicant is going to do is apply online or in person. Once they have applied, we will, the county will review the applicant's file, determine if the applicant is eligible, and if eligible, calculate an award. We estimate this will take about three weeks. Applicant then might be requested some additional documentation depending on if anything else is needed to determine their award. If so, we will reach out to that applicant over the phone and an email. And then after everything is said and done, the next is that we will get an award letter ready for that applicant and send it over to them and then pay direct their utilities or rent or mortgage assistance to the provider. I'm going to go right into and show a quick test application. So this application, I have populated just a little bit of the applications that we can go through it quickly. But when people go onto the Finy County website and they click apply here, this is the screen that they will see. At the top, we have some general information about the program, some information on the required documents. There's links right in here so that anyone can view what is required before they start and instructions. At the top, they're going to put in their household name, their first name, last name, and their phone number, first and secondary if you have. and their phone number, first and secondary if it's available, like to start their application. The first important question is if they applied to the Fannie Household Relief Grant Program in 2020. If so, they just choose yes. And then yes or no if they received an award. This could also be no. Their email, how many people are in their household, in this example, I have two. Just one that is over the age of eighteen, this will be updated given the size of the household. They'll upload their driver's license or any other photo ID if they do not have a driver's license or date of birth. And if they have any income, we use the income to calculate their regular mortgage assistance. If the answer is yes, the applicant can look at the required documents, download any additional information if needed, and then upload their income verification documents. If the applicant doesn't have income, they'll choose no. And then they're going to check this box here that certifies that all the information they're providing is true and that they don't receive any income. In this case, there's no other members of the household that are eighteen, so we're going to choose no. If there were members that were over eighteen, it would be yes. And they'll be the opportunity to upload back person's information and their income documents. Keeping it simple for now this time. Next is the physical property address. Put that in here. And then whether they rent or own their home. Depending on what is chosen, different things will populate in the application. You can see here. In this example, we're going to say rent. There's also an opportunity here that if, if the applicant has a different Marin address than physical address, they can add that in. Going to go right into the rental part of the application here. This is where you're going to include all the landlord information, how much they pay in rent. If they're current on their rent. If no, they're going to, this is going to be a yes or no question, if no. How many months back rent do you owe, the applicant owes? How much did they owe? And then the opportunity to upload their current lease agreement. And then documentation supporting past due rent, if past due rent is something that they are doing. Next section is utilities. If the applicant pays utilities outside of their rent, they can add utilities here right, by adding a utility statement. They'll put in what type of utility, the name of the provider, name on the account, and if their currents, and if their payments are current. Show you a quick example on how to do that. You would add your bill. The utility type, so let's say it is electricity, name of the provider. Our payments current, let's say yes in this case. Take you right back to the application and you pick up where you left off. You'll see here that it popped up. The last question here on the application is whether or not the applicant has received any funding for utilities, rent, mortgage, or internet. If the answer is no, you just move right along. If the answer is yes, it works the same way as utilities. You can upload that information about what other assistance was provided. Now that you've completed your application, you sign the acknowledgement and consent. This is information that you have put in your application is true. And there's a digital signature. Once you've signed, at the very bottom, you can hit submit. And that is it, you've completed your application for the HHR program.
Appreciate that Julianne, I have a couple of questions and then I'm going to see if fellow commissioners have questions. Obviously, not everyone in, uh, who would be eligible for, for this program has access to the internet. So can we, before we depart today, cover for that person who, who's without internet, how they can make application? And we have Roxanne in the room today and so, uh, if somebody will address that, please.
Absolutely, I'm happy to address that because the best way for someone who doesn't have internet access to apply is to schedule an appointment in person with Roxanne and your team. The best way to do that is to call, um, there's a phone number listed here. We also will have some files and additional information being distributed throughout the community. Be happy to, um, let Roxanne jump in and talk a little bit about the places that we will be promoting the program.
So we need to advertise the phone number as well as the website. Roxanne is approaching the podium, so we'll give her the floor for.
Yes, um, the telephone number is going to be the best way, obviously, for the public.
Can you?
She can't be heard at home, closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, I have not explained to those online wondering why some of us are without masks, but we do that so we can be heard and understood, so thank you.
No problem. Um, yes, the phone number is going to be the quickest, simplest way to get ahold of us. We have four workstations set up at the office. We have the ability to scan documents. What we do ask is that they do call and make the appointment so that we can make sure that they have that list of documentation so they're not without anything when they show up at our office to be able to complete their application in full. The quicker we can get the documentation in, the full set of documentation in, obviously, the quicker we're going to be able to process their grant. So, yes, the telephone number needs to be publicized. We do have some PSAs going out. We've reached out to all of our coalition partners. We'll be sending a link out later this afternoon to all of those folks. A lot of, um, the, like Catholic charities, they have some folks that help fill out those applications as well. So, um, we'll be all over the place. Hopefully, we'll reach quite a few more people this time.
So the old saying, you're from the government and you're there to help is true.
Yes, sir, it is.
All right. Then Julianne, one more question and then I'll turn it over for the other commissioners to, to ask if they desire. You, I'm going to give you a hypothetical, person makes application, but somewhere along the line of days or weeks down the road, they want to know if their application is being processed and whatnot. How, the, the other day in our, in our Thursday meeting, you indicated how they can keep track of, of the progress of their application. Can you share that again?
Absolutely. So once applied, the applicants will receive the email confirmation that they've applied, that their number, which, um, which applicant number they had. The best way for them to know the status of their application, aside from the general of it'll take about three weeks to process, will be in touch, is that they can always email or call and we can give them an update on if anything's missing or what their ETA is for estimated time of arrival for their application, um, award letter. And that would be the best way to keep in touch with us and we can, we can support them and answer any questions.
I thank you. This morning, as we opened the meeting, I said we want to, to the best of our ability, be transparent and this program is, I appreciate that. So I'll turn to other commissioners, anyone have a comment or a question? No? Uh, let's start with Larry.
Julianne, uh, up there on your language box, uh, how many languages do you offer? Whoa, a lot.
More than you can speak, Larry.
I have a hard time with English. Thank you very much.
That's being transparent, Larry. Thank you. Bill?
Julianne, as we spoke about Thursday at the meeting, uh, can you show me how someone could get in there off a keyword? Because obviously, the citizens don't know this technical term of household emergency relief. So can I put, you know, rent help or something in the search box and it'll connect to this? Or, I, I missed the earlier part, does, does the banner now let them enter this?
So here you'll see on the, our very first banner is Apply for Rental and Utility Assistance. And then the link right here, so this is what, the first thing that anyone will see when they come to the Fannie County site. Um, if they do know the acronym of HHR, it's also the first thing on that upper left-hand corner here.
Okay.
And then on the banner on the top here, you can see that it says Apply for Rental and Utility Assistance Freedom. You can see at the top here too. So we're hoping that the first banner here and then the banner on the top and then also this upper left-hand, so we're hoping there's these three points of entry when you get to the Fannie County site to see, um, where you can find the application.
Thank you. Looks good.
Commissioner, just to add on to that, if you do go into the search box on the top right and you type in rent or rental assistance, you know, the, the first results are the HHR program.
Yeah.
They'll give you your eligibility criteria, for rental assistance.
Okay, appreciate that. Any other questions? Robert? Oh, just a second.
My, my comment simply is that. Get my thing turned on. My comment simply is I think this is very user-friendly. I've been online many times on applying for different things and this is probably the simplest, most user-friendly program I've seen in quite a while. So my compliments to you and your staff on this.
Robert, anything that you need to address?
No, I think they've done a really fine job. I know that we've had an awful lot of individuals that have worked within the program, provide some input on this and I think that's, you're seeing the fruits of all that effort here and, uh, we're looking forward to, to this program kicking off today and hopefully, we can, we can top the number of, that we had before, which was right around a hundred and thirty.
Good. Before we bid Jeff and Julianne goodbye, uh, Roxanne, is there anything that you need to address from the, the, the two experts that we have on Zoom? And I see a city representative here, do you have any questions or comments?
No, looks good.
Look good, okay. Well, folks, anything else from back east?
No, the, uh, just don't be an interesting Super Bowl, that's all I'll say.
Oh, oh no. Oh no, it's not going to be interesting, Chiefs are going to run over them.
We want to renegotiate your contract Jeff, so. You folks.
Hey, I didn't say who I was cheering for.
Okay. We appreciate your time, you have a good, good week and we'll talk to you Thursday. All right, thanks folks. I see on the schedule, it says, uh, Fannie County Economic Development and I, uh, we are blessed with Bob Kreitzer and with Lana and so whoever, please come forward.
Good morning. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Fannie County Economic Development and specifically Tom Walker, Sam Hands and myself, who serve as your representatives to the economic development, we want to say thank you for your continued support. You know, it's been a while since we've been here and been able to kind of fill you in on what we've been doing for all of the different reasons. Our staff, we have a very, very professional staff and they continue to do all of the things that we've been charged to do. You know, always going out and turning over different rocks, trying to find some more and additional businesses and find other ways to help support the existing businesses. And then this year, they've been tasked also with doing all they can to keep up with all of the information relative to COVID-19 and how it impacts not only all of our businesses, but all of the people that come to our community to support our businesses. It's been a challenge, but you know, the one overriding thing is the one thing that we've always been special about in Western Kansas. And that's that you, as a county commission, our city of Garden City, our city of Holcomb, USD 363 in Holcomb and 457 in Garden, our community college and, and now, yes, our hospital, very, very important. We're very blessed that we as taxpayers don't have to support that hospital and we get the benefit of being a very, very solid team member with them. All of these entities working together is the one thing that we've been able to sell and we can't drop that. We've got to make sure that we continue down that road and as long as we communicate with one another, as long as we all know what the other teams are doing, we're going to be successful because we can all pull on the same end of the rope and get something done. But if we start trying to do things independently, separately, and doing it in a different way, we're going to start slipping. And in this kind of competitive day and age, we can't do that. So, thank you for all of the things that you've done. Thank you for all of the things that you will continue to do, we hope. And I'm going to turn it over to Lana to give you the nuts and bolts of what we've been doing and give you a report.
Well, we appreciate your, your service to the community and to the, to that board, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Morning Lana.
Good morning.
We can get it, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning, morning.
I did recognize, after I had sent the quarterly report to Dory and to Celine over at the city, that I didn't include the industrial prospects that we're working with. So that's been added to your printed report. So, uh, just to give kind of an overview of this, mo, again, most everything is the same. We did just add the industrial prospects that are, that are moving forward at this time. Um, first, we always like to remind you, our meet quarterly, or monthly meetings are held on the fourth Wednesday of each month. And while we've not been able to have those in person, and we can proudly say that we have stayed 100% in compliance with the Attorney General's direction at the very start of this pandemic, that our meetings would continue to be open to the public and available, and we've been able to do that via Zoom and Facebook, fortunately, and our website. So, um, the board was very, very clear that that would not slip and they certainly didn't let it. So we appreciate everybody's support in that. Project updates, Empirical has commenced construction. If you haven't been out there, you need to go see, it's a big, big, big pile. And it's looking really good, they're, they're having a good success and we've had pretty good weather. Of course, these guys, a lot of these construction folks are from Iowa and the Dakotas, so they think even when it's 20 degrees, it's not bad. So maybe that's a good thing. And, but things are moving along well there. Uh, Fannie County Childcare and Early Learning Network, um, you're, I know you're going to have a little bit more discussion about that after, um, my presentation. But just as an update on that, uh, FCEDC has taken kind of the lead role in being the heavy lifting, if you will. There's no paid staff for that network yet. It has a very solid Board of Directors and excellent direction, but no paid staff. So FCEDC has continued to push that initiative forward and currently, we're working with Turning Point Nazarene Church on a contract to, uh, for the provision of their childcare. East Garden Village, we're working on a couple of facilities. And with BMSI Inc., which owns the Third Street facility that you guys are, are aware of. Prospect seven dash twenty, Project Green River, this is a logistics and industrial project. And we've been working with two large agricultural industries and with, uh, the short line to create some rail enhancements and as well as some industrial sites that would be available. Prospect ten twenty, Project Aberdeen, uh, this is an industrial project. We hosted, um, some company consultants back in October and have sent them some follow-up information. They were hoping to make a decision by the end of the year. Unfortunately, they had some hangups, uh, in their travels and, um, some unforeseen circumstances with wastewater treatment. So we've provided them with updated information and they are still considering, uh, which sites they'll go with. Um, and Prospect one twenty, Project Proxima, this is an international prospect brought to us by the Department of Commerce International Team. And Fannie County is still in the hunt on this project and we just submitted some additional information about a week ago. Uh, obviously, working with existing, uh, businesses and, and continuing to support them any way that we can and, and working largely on workforce development, which has been an interesting, uh, challenge. Things are a little different, obviously, um, when you're in a pandemic. So we've found some new and unique ways to reach out, not only to folks who are interested in looking at the community and opportunities that we have here, but also in communicating with our youth and with folks in the community who are looking for training and additional certifications. So overall, I think it's been a, a good experience for us to do that. This year, we were able to bring online the Construction Trades Program that we worked with the Southwest Kansas Builders Association to design and the early childhood programming, which was obviously extremely important, um, to our childcare network, uh, as well as the Industrial Maintenance Program that we designed specifically with Empirical and Tice. as well as the Industrial Maintenance Program that we designed specifically with Empirical and Tyson. So they have their own unique pathways, starting in the high school in both Holcomb High School and Garden City High School, and continuing on through Garden City Community College. Housing wise, as we all know, that's still one of our larger challenges. And we do have some good projects underway now and are helping with a couple of projects that have gotten stalled. We've been able to connect those folks with, hopefully, some assistance to move those forward and get that housing started underway. And contract services, FCEDC is offering the first boot camp for 2021 next week, February 9th and 10th. And we have, I think we're gonna end up with three communities attending that boot camp. And then we have a few folks who are attending virtually at the state level so that they can promote the program to other communities that are working on childcare for their communities. Anything I can answer on that quarterly report? Any questions?
Go ahead.
I'll start off. Are you still helping counties surrounding us with some economic development projects?
Yes, sir, we are. Haskell County is, has been a more formal relationship, so we work pretty closely with them. I've made a couple of trips down there in the evenings to work with them on a couple of projects they're working on. And I just actually had an update on Friday on one of the projects that we've been helping them with. So hopefully, hopefully they'll, they'll be able to land it. I think they're, they're looking good. So again, obviously, the surrounding areas are very important to us. And you, you'll see a good part of that. You got to enjoy, at our last board meeting, when you were tuned in, you can see why those outlying areas are so extremely important to our community. Their growth is important.
Dwayne?
While you were talking about housing, our contractors seem to be incredibly busy and everything's moving. Is the timing gonna work out? Are they gonna have some of these projects completed and timed for, like, like Oracle's when they start staffing their company?
Yeah, well, I think it's important to, to, you know, recognize that it's not, we're not building the houses for the empirical employee rate.
I realize that, I realize that.
But what we have to do is create the opportunity for folks to move up and, and move through the housing funnel, if you will, so that we're making room for folks at whatever price point they need to come in at. Yes, I think we'll have some projects that will, that will get there in time. And that, specifically on the rental end, you know, you can imagine if you were moving to a new community for a job, for instance, with Empirical, you may not want to jump right in and purchase a home. And so rental opportunities are gonna be really important, and whatever way we can get those into the marketplace is gonna be helpful. We do have several multifamily opportunities right now that, that are already approved and zoned and so forth. So hopefully, we can continue to move those projects rapidly. Those build a little bit quicker. But also, again, provide for that, for that individual who isn't ready to commit to purchasing a home yet.
Follow up, I'm understanding construction materials are getting kind of short. Have you heard complaints?
They're expensive. Yeah, yeah. Certainly, prices have gone up considerably over the past year. I think, you know, I, I get a newsletter every morning from the National Association of Home Builders, and I think the general consensus is that's gonna level out probably sooner rather than later. But there are definitely challenges with that. And that does impact some, obviously, some of our multifamily, the rental type properties, just in that it can increase the costs for construction enough that they then have to increase rents in order to make the project work. But where we really see the challenges with that are in the appraisals of owner occupied homes. It's very important that, that appraisers recognize that increased cost that goes into building the house.
Juan?
Mine's just clarification. Lana, on the three prospects that you added to the list, I understand on the 1-20 that that one is, they're considering Fannie County among others. But the other two, I wasn't quite clear, are they considering only sites in Fannie County? Or did you mean to say sites, it was Fannie County and sites, side of Fannie County?
Sure. Green River, Prospect 720 is in Fannie County. That is a local prospect. And Project Aberdeen is actually looking at two states, currently two regions, I should say. And there's a couple of states within those regions that they could locate in. But yes, Fannie County is, is on a short list.
Okay. I just wanted to clear, and thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Yeah. And just as a reminder, since you brought that up, the labeling, if you haven't sat through one of our meetings, you haven't heard our, our explanation, but that's, for instance, Prospect 7-20. Seven is the month that it came to us, and 20 is the year.
Right. Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions, Lana. I noticed that the tax collections, sales tax are staying fairly stable even through all of the pandemic. That, that's affected more than your ability to go to the neighboring counties and help them out. It's also, it's put some kind of a, of a restriction on your operation from years past, has it not? You're, are you free to get out and around and, and do the recruiting that you did a year or two ago?
We are not traveling, no. Our, no, nobody in our office has, has done any traveling. And, but we've, you know, we've been really fortunate. We've been able to host folks in our community. We welcome sites to come here, but...
My reason for bringing that up is COVID has more costs than just the health. It's really...
Oh, for sure, yeah. And, and, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit in our economic update, impact update that we've done for you. So if you guys remember in, I'm sorry?
Well, I have one other question before you leave the building. Is Empirical, are they through digging in that pit? They, they finally got down to, it looks like the water. I... Do you know how much more they...
There's a lot more digging to be done, yeah.
Is there? Okay.
Yeah, that is a huge project. We've not, we've not have a, had a project of that magnitude built at one time in Fannie County previously, so...
I don't know how deep that hole is gonna be by design, but...
I think we ended up at 47 or 48 feet, and originally it was going to be 63 feet deep. And I think now it's, it's less than 50, but I'm, I don't quote me on the exact depth.
I apologize for interrupting you for, for nonsensical items, but go ahead.
That's okay. That's, everything makes sense. All right, so if you guys remember, we did bring you a report last spring that our board had requested we do. We started tracking data related to the pandemic, obviously, back in February of last year. And we've continued to do that on a regular basis. So I just wanted to give you an update of where we're at as far as the economic impact to date from COVID. So first of all, the active COVID cases since March of 2020. And we just showed this so that you have an idea of when did we hit those spikes and how long were we in those spikes, if you will. And as you can see, it's been, it's been a really good last couple of months, so that's, that's encouraging. The next chart is unemployment, 2019 versus 2020. As you guys are very well aware, we have had exceptionally low unemployment in Fannie County for many, many, many years. 2019 was, was no, no exception to that. And you can see that in 2019, it stayed pretty flat all the way through. When we go to look at 2020, one quick note, the reason February and March are completely bottomed out is because Governor Kelly had sent all state employees home, and so nobody did the report for counties. So we don't know what the unemployment rate was in February and March. They did not go back and try to recapture that later. And, but as you can see, the spike for us was definitely in March. Our high was just a little bit less than 6%, which was still exceptionally low compared to the eastern half of the state. Certainly, the service economies were impacted greatly by unemployment. Ours came, as you can see, came right back down pretty rapidly. And so we are fairly confident that our, our spike here was really due to the shutdown of retail and service businesses and folks that just, unfortunately, companies had to let them go until they could reopen.
Essential businesses.
Yeah. Which we have a hard time accepting that any of our businesses are nonessential. But we would say those that the governor deemed unessential, absolutely. There you go. Transient guest tax impacts, this is, you guys know that the transient guest tax is one of those things that we consistently track year over year because we know that that tells a story about the folks who are coming to our community to do business. So if you look at this chart, what we've done here, and this is, can be a little bit, a little bit confusing. But the orange line is our service communities. So those are Overland Park, Lenexa, Manhattan, Hayes, communities that, that are not production-based economies, okay? And then the blue are the opposite. They are production-based. In this instance, the blue line includes Dodge City, Fannie County, and Liberal. And I say them in that way because in Liberal and Dodge City, the cities actually collect the transient guest tax. Fannie County is one of the few that is a county-collected tax. And then the thinner line is Fannie County itself. So what we did here, just to make it easy to compare and see how the impact has been across those communities, at the, at the beginning of this, we normalized everybody to a one. So this takes both of those sets and says, here's where they should be based on what they would normally do. And then you can see the impacts of, of how they've, they've been hit by it. In this case, the, the service economies dipped a lot lower, obviously, as a percentage of what they should have been doing. And they stayed lower all the way through. They're still not anywhere near back, obviously, to, to normal times, if you will, with hotel stays. And then you can see Fannie County really, obviously, follows that production economy line, which we would expect it to. Dodge City and Liberal's transient guest tax was impacted much, much like ours, but not quite as bad in Dodge City as it was here. And again, that just speaks to the fact that people aren't here for leisure travel. You know, fortunately, a good percentage of folks who are here are here for business, and they've continued to come. But no question, our, our hotels and our restaurants have been the most challenged business sectors.
One question about your graph, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not a, a graph drawer, but it would appear from what you're presenting that the, the receipts for, for guest tax are down clearly 40% from where they were at that high. Is that, would that be fairly accurate?
For production economies, yes.
Well, also for Fannie County?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And the next chart is sales tax collections, and it's absolutely crazy. But in 2020, the year of the pandemic, we still broke, broke previous records for sales tax collections. So it was another record-setting year, which is pretty incredible and speaks very, very well to the fact that, as we've said all along, by increasing our, our national retail presence, we're creating a very, very strong hub economy. And this shows you the strength of that. And when you're, when you're talking about a period where, number one, we had a shutdown in a portion of this year, but certainly there were folks who were much less apt to be traveling for shopping, and they still chose to come and shop in our community. So good, very good results from that. We're pleased with that. So just kind of a summary of those economic impacts. Lodging and dining sectors have undoubtedly seen the most significant economic setbacks. If we're able to procure any additional funds for, to assist businesses, we certainly need to be looking at those sectors and making sure that we talk directly to them to ensure that we get them any resources that may be available to them. Unemployment has, has returned to nearly the, the levels it was at pre-COVID. And despite lengthy shutdowns, Garden City experienced another record-setting year for sales tax collections. And then the last page is just the, the things that FCEDC has been doing, our, what we consider our COVID responses. Obviously, from, since February of last year, we've been collecting data and compiling that data for presentation related to COVID. We managed the local CDBG funding, those funds that we had set aside in Fannie County and City of Garden City. We were able to procure our CDBG CV funding from the state of Kansas to bring it back. And, and the City of Garden City has access to use those funds. We've done two COVID business town halls where we talked to the businesses, this was early on in the pandemic, about how they could safely reopen and sharing resources and information with them. We did create the Safe Reopening Guide for businesses, as well as the Safe Operating Guide for businesses. That, that document's still out on our website and still gets quite a bit of traffic each month. And then we've done a COVID Community Town Hall in partnership with St. Catherine Hospital and Livewell Fannie County. And then just last week, we did a Community Vaccine Town Hall with St. Catherine Hospital and Livewell Fannie County. So happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Questions, anybody? Did a fine job of presenting. We're glad to see you back here. Welcome you back anytime.
Well, you'll, you'll regret saying that because it won't be long and we'll all be back. Thank goodness.
I believe that, so.
Thank you.
My thanks, Lana, and thanks, Bob. Health Department, are you ready? Oh, wait a minute. We have a quick appointment on your way up. I, I don't know, the, the Fannie County Childcare and Early Learning Network consideration for an appointment. I don't see any nominees. Do we have any?
Well, we had the question from Larry last time, Mr. Chairman, about the 363 district and...
Yeah, and I spoke with Lana several times, and she said that they participate in their committee meetings now. So I don't know if Scott wanted to be named as a, a board member or not.
No, Dr. Meyer actually got back with me and wants Deanna Novak to fill their slot. She's been the one who's really been leading the charge on getting their early childhood programming into their school district. So she's going to serve on our board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate her.
You nominate whom?
Deanna Novak, right?
No, you guys don't need to do that.
No, well, you do.
You, you need a county representative. USD 363 is putting Deanna on there.
Okay.
You guys need a county representative to...
Well, we had a nominee at our last meeting sitting at the end of this table.
We kind of volunteered that nominee, I believe.
I thought he volunteered. Anyway, somebody want to nominate him, and we can take formal action?
So be it, Mr. Chairman. Robert Reese will be nominated.
Second for Mr. Reese.
We have a motion and a second and any discussion. All those in favor of, of appointing our county administrator, Robert Reese, to that board, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. Now, Health Department, I'm sorry. Morning.
Good morning. So...
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You just want to see the other half of my face.
Read your lips.
Sure. Um, so I'll give you an update on current COVID numbers and then give you another update on vaccines and essentially where we're at on that process. So for January 10th through the 16th, and actually, if you can scroll down, it can also show the numbers on the graph. A little bit further down. And then can you select? Yeah, that, that's good there, because it'll show the... So for the week of January 10th through the week of January 16th, we had a total of 88 new positives and also a positivity rate of 14%. Our average hospitalizations during that time was 12.5. January 17th through the, January 27th, holy smokes, okay. January 17th through January 23rd, we had 61 new positives. And now a decrease in our positivity rate down to 10%. Our hospitalizations during that time was an average of 12. So to talk a little bit about the vaccine update over at Fairgrounds, we did send out a release that we are launching a collaborative approach that started today. This is made impossible by Health Department Genesis, Livewell Fannie County, and St. Catherine's Hospital. We are vaccinating tentatively, the plan is 1,000 people this week. The hours are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 this week. We have sent out the COVID enrollment form. We are asking that people register for their appointments so that this helps us socially distance, control crowd, crowd, crowd size at the exhibition building. Of course, maintain all safety precautions, but also decrease wait times so that we can move through our residence as soon as possible. For this tiered plan, so for Phase 2, we are prioritizing so far 65 and older, law enforcement, licensed clergy, and then any healthcare personnel still... law enforcement, licensed clergy, and then any healthcare personnel still from Phase One that still need a vaccine. Communication plan-wise, we have launched this out onto our finneycounty.org site, specifically the COVID Hub dashboard. If you can scroll up, I'll show you where that is. So here, there's a vaccine enrollment form, so there is an online enrollment form, as well as the phased plan communication. We've gone on to Spanish radio to also announce the vaccine plan, vaccination at the Fairgrounds. Also, our newspaper communications group collaborative, of course, through Livewell Finney County and all of our partners in this event. We'll continue to announce the eligibility as we move through the plan. So we are continually prioritizing specific tiers through Phase Two of population dependent upon, so it's all based off of the information from the vaccine plan from the state. As of the end of last week, so as of January 29th, we have vaccinated over eighteen hundred residents in Finney County. Like I said, we are planning a thousand doses administered this week. We are also working to launch a mass vaccination application that will also allow for online scheduling of our citizens, so it'd be a link that they could access that would take them into a scheduling calendar so that they could pick whatever date and time is specific to them. It is extremely laborious currently for our staff to individually call the over sixteen hundred waitlist people that we have currently on our waitlist. It is a significant investment for staff at this point to work through that. We have successfully launched the first day, so that's a very proud moment. The process seems to be working very smoothly. We did have a soft opening last Thursday and Friday where we moved through about a hundred and twenty through the exhibition building that were second-dose citizens. And then we also had around three hundred and fifty doses that were also administered at the Health Department and a drive-up method as well. So we are actively working through those waitlists. As for testing, we will also have a result or a release today that announces that the Go Get Tested site that is currently at the Fairgrounds will be moving into our 4H building to do an inside method. They have had several days of canceling due to weather conditions, so they are moving indoors to continue to provide that effort. Another hot topic item, if someone does not have internet or cannot navigate the online enrollment form, they are welcome to call the Health Department or Genesis, and the staff will gladly fill out an enrollment form on behalf of that person. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, Bill?
I'd just like to comment, and I meant to make this when Lana was up here, but I think we need to continue to emphasize mask use. I was at a restaurant this Saturday, past Saturday night, and I won't mention the name, but it was downtown, and half of the waitstaff did not have masks on, and I won't go back there. So I think if people want to preserve their business, they need to abide by these mask recommendations and mandates, frankly, because I've been fully vaccinated. I mean, I'm three weeks after my second shot, so I have a measure of protection, but we don't know who's carrying this virus, and I don't want to carry it home. So I appreciate your emphasis on that. I listened to the town hall, actually, last night, since it was recorded, and that emphasis was very obvious by most speakers, but it still seems like some businesses don't get it. And so any emphasis you can make there. I know we're not going to send the masked police into establishments, but we, citizens who have money to spend, vote with our dollars, and I think it's important that businesses know. I thought the soft opening went really well. I was very impressed, and I look forward to you scaling that up this week. This is a national issue to get these vaccinations in arms, and I really appreciate the way you and Genesis and eventually the hospital are teaming and live well to get this done. Thank you.
Larry, did you have a comment?
Colleen, I have a question on the critical workers issue. What are the Tyson employees, are they doing it through their company?
Sure, so we touched base with Tyson last week. All Tyson-paid employees will be vaccinated at the Tyson Clinic through their initiative there. They have a couple of contracting companies that work out at the Tyson plant, and we will be coordinating specifically with them once we get to that tier of Phase Two to then vaccinate them. We have some sixty-five and older Tyson workers that are choosing to come be vaccinated by us here in the next several weeks, so still coordinating that effort jointly.
Colleen, several questions. In no particular order, as far as making some sense from the order. When you said that so many had been vaccinated, I think it was eighteen hundred or something like that is what you said, is that their first shot, or is that completely vaccinated with their second dose?
Majority is first shot, and then about, I think, four hundred and fifty of those are second shot. And that's all Finney County residents, so that's what's been reported by the hospital, Genesis, and also Health Department.
And just to clarify, a follow-up to that, we're still doing Moderna?
Yes, sir.
Am I saying that right? Nothing with Pfizer from a county perspective, is that correct?
From Health Department, it's been all Moderna's stock from the state. The hospital has received some doses of Pfizer.
And the distance between the first and second shots is like three weeks or something, if I'm not mistaken on Moderna, is that correct?
So Moderna, the recommendation is after day twenty-eight, so twenty-eight to thirty-two is the recommended range. However, a citizen can receive it after that day thirty-two range and not have to restart the series.
I know the reason for me quizzing you on that, and I'm sorry about the libreness, but is at the nursing home where a family member resides, it was three weeks, and I don't know if it was Moderna or Pfizer, but it was exactly three weeks from between first and second shots, and that's what was kind of driving my question.
It was likely Pfizer because Pfizer is the twenty-one-day mark, and that would fall in line with it. Most of the nursing homes were done through Walgreens or CVS.
This was done through Walgreens?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Secondly, in a release from the state the other day, it appears that counties have more flexibility now on whether they go to Phase Two or what's included in Phase Two or things of that nature, which I think is a great thing. I think local control, I'm a strong proponent of local control, as I think everyone here understands. So are we taking advantage of that, and I mean that in a good way, to be a little bit more flexible versus what maybe the state is mandating?
Absolutely. So the state released that we could operate through and prioritize the population groups of Phase Two, but discouraged moving straight to Phase Three without communication with the state first. So then we have taken Phase Two and then prioritized the groups and created some tiers. And then that was signed off and approved by Genesis Hospital, Livewell County Administrator, and then two of your fellow commissioners to see that tiered prioritization. Of course, the timeline that we operate through Phase Two is completely dependent upon vaccine inventory and as we receive that from the state, but we are definitely ramping up this week and patiently awaiting the announcements for the next several weeks of how many doses that we'll receive. Typically, we know towards the end of the week what we will receive the following week. So that communication plan at some point does impact how we can plan for the next several weeks. It makes it a little bit difficult to get that message out and plan for several weeks ahead of time because of that.
Another question is with regard to other counties, and I've asked you this type of question before in coordination with other counties, but I know that we're being permitted to cross counties, and a Finney County resident doesn't have to get the vaccine in Finney County if the other county permits that. And I did note late last week where Cedric County said they are not going to allow that cross-county, and I don't know if it's because of lack of supply or whatever, but are we seeing that? Are we permitting that? And you mentioned the eighteen hundred were Finney County residents, and so certainly the priority needs to be Finney County residents because we are Finney County Health. But can you address the cross-county issue just briefly?
So our prioritization is Finney County residents or those that work in Finney County that fall into those eligible populations. We've had some kind of fall through the cracks that we didn't realize, and they were, you know, when they travel long ways and they're sixty-five and older, I don't want to turn them away if they're already at our site. So we've had a couple of those. However, we are very quickly pulling back the reins on that to make sure that we are doing Finney County eligible populations that work in Finney County.
And then my last question is back to the Fairgrounds and what you're ramping up this week. You'll still have the fifteen-minute wait and so forth as far as any sensing any adverse effects and that kind of stuff is what my understanding is. Is that correct?
Yes, so after residents receive their vaccination, we have an observation area of chairs that are all appropriately distanced so that they can wait. And then we also have EMS on-site as well to aid in case anybody has an allergic response.
Yeah, good point. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
My question, Colleen, is simply logistics for the exhibition building. Is the main entrance that you would like the public to use, the main south with the foyer, is that the entrance you prefer?
We would definitely like residents to use the south entrance on the exhibition building, which is the main entrance, and travel through those doors. We are working to release a map that also shows the fairgrounds of where people can go for vaccines versus the new testing location at the 4H building. So we will be releasing that map here shortly to identify both of those locations and then making sure that we are giving those instructions when people do call and we do talk to them to get these.
Okay, thank you. It was just simply a little guidance for the public.
Other question, Bill?
Yes, I'd just like to comment on vaccines. I could give you a lecture here if I could share my screen, but I'll spare you the lecture. But yes, the Pfizer's the three-week and the Moderna is the four, as Colleen indicates, but there's increasing evidence that we can extend that time. So I appreciate you respecting the twenty-eight to thirty-two-day interval, although worldwide there's a thought of we'll get more pop if we wait a little longer on the second dose. I would encourage folks not to pre-medicate before their vaccines. There's medical evidence that the vaccines work slightly less well if you load it up on antifever medicine, whatever that might be for you, before you get your vaccine. So take a little pain for gain later on. There was an announcement of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine releasing their data last week. That's different than emergency use authorization, which will hopefully come this week, but it brought up the topic of the so-called mutants or variants. And I'd just like everyone to understand that the virus we got in the United States was already a variant, okay? It wasn't like the original Wuhan. It had already changed in China before it got here. So the two RNA vaccines, Moderna and Pfizer, were tested against really the first variant, and as you know, tested very well. Johnson &amp; Johnson, the one-shot vaccine, came out with a seventy percent efficacy overall, but eighty-five percent in preventing severe disease, hospitalization, and death, which makes for some excitement because it's going to be more easily administered and logistically more easily administered for health departments. But interestingly, the studies in Latin America, it was only two-thirds effective, sixty-six percent, and in South Africa, fifty-seven percent. So there is some urgency to get these vaccines in people's arms before we do see the other variants. Every person who gets the virus is themselves an incubator for a variant virus. If a virus learns within one individual system how to do things better, it will potentially be passed to someone else, and that virus will dominate at some point. So again, folks casually accepting exposure to this virus put all of us at risk because these variants, they don't occur out in a dish somewhere in a lab. They occur in human beings. This virus doesn't live in pigs and horses and cattle. It lives in us. So I'm militant about this, that every individual really is a soldier in this battle against this invisible enemy. And thank God, we had these vaccines really ready to roll, although still, COVID vaccine has not been in a human being longer than a year to date. March was the first vaccine in a person. Now, there were obviously animal studies well before that. So again, I would not, I would like to tamp down fear of these variants because the vaccines we have currently are working very well against them, but there's some urgency here, and I appreciate, again, the way you've handled this to protect residents of Finney County.
My turn?
Sure.
I have a comment and a question for you. Comment is, it was a pleasure to take a tour a week or so ago of the exhibition building and see all of the thought that went into setting up for this mass vaccination effort. You indicated the four entities involved in the vaccinations, and you actually have four lines for people to be going through, but I would like to recognize that you had a little help getting all that set up. And so for the folks with maintenance, with emergency management, with the other departments, thank you for participating and shuffling and experimenting, and then a couple commissioners show up with some more suggestions, and they abide. That's my comment. My question is the same one that I posed to Julianne when we were talking about the Household Assistance Program. Not everybody in the world has access to the internet. I understand you have like four phone lines, so would you, for the person without the internet access to fill out the enrollment form that we see on the screen, tell the world here how we get registered?
Sure, so those without internet are welcome to call Genesis or the Health Department, and a person on the line will gladly fill out the enrollment form for that person on the phone. So they'll just go through the series of questions, fill it out, type it in, and enter it for them. That person then goes on to the waitlist, and then as soon as we can get to that scheduling, we'll launch that. As that new vaccination platform is launched here, it'll be the same process. If you do not have internet access or cannot navigate the form, feel free to call Health Department or Genesis, and we will fill out an enrollment form on your behalf and coordinate that. So that will also be communicated out with the launching of the different forms, too.
Okay, well, we appreciate everything you're doing. Anything else, Lana?
Just one thing I forgot to mention, Mr. Chairman, and I do appreciate, I have a family member who's getting the vaccine today, got, received the call to confirm the appointment on Saturday, so somebody was working on Saturday. And what reminded me of mentioning that as a compliment is what Dwayne was asking about, and they were very clear as far as coming into the south entrance of the building and so forth. So I think they're doing a nice job as far as clarifying with them when they set that, when they're confirming that appointment.
Anything else from anybody? We appreciate you. Thank you for your time. Good luck down at the Fairgrounds, and we will see you down there. Roger, do you want us to take a break as we generally do? You guys need a short break? You doing okay? Come on, Roger.
Morning, gentlemen.
Hello, Roger.
Farmland update.
Farmland update. January 7th, I received word that we have required all the property. There's a few glitches going on. There's three issues that came up after auditing all the acquisitions and everything, dealing with the bank and the mortgages and getting releases on them. The banks don't have any issues. It's just going through those hurdles. So we're actually looking to let this project in about eight weeks. That's just a rough estimate. That's just, I'm kind of jumping in new on this project, but from everything I've tried to read going back, it's been kind of a long, drawn-out thing, but I got an email from the engineer, and he said maybe six to eight weeks for a let after these mortgage issues are settled with Farmland. That's about all anything new there. Questions?
Let's get her done.
Do those bids come to the county or is that a state-led project?
State-led.
Okay. And where would that bid opening be at? Would you happen to know that?
I believe Garden City. Could you know?
It should be done for the city of Garden City. This is not a state project. It's a local project with state funding connected to it. So it will be managed locally. And the city took over on property acquisition, as you guys are all there, about a year ago to try to get that finished up. So the city will most likely be where the RFPs will be available for contractors.
See, there you go. How'd I do? But yeah, I'm doing a lot of research background on this. I guess it's quite involved and quite drug out from what I understand, but anyway, it sounds like things are turning around. Any other questions for Lana?
Jenny Barker wrote. Any updates?
What do you want to know?
Doesn't move very fast, seems like.
Huh?
It doesn't seem like it's moving very fast. Is it, are they on target scheduled or?
Yeah, actually, they're on target. They are on their days of contract. They're about halfway through their days right now, and they haven't had to use very many weather days. So they are on target. The eastern part that will be county roads are almost done. We have to go back in, or they have to go back in and realign some culverts and entrances that the elevations were incorrect. So there is that to do on them, but they have topped most of the roads with the AS1, which is just a rock. You know, it'll be a nice rock for them to drive on, but the main drainage structures are in place and everything's in place. So once the weather warms up a little bit, they're going to start going north with that or south. But no, it's online for projects as far as days.
You got one over there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I, there's no time when the concrete will start. I mean, I drove it yesterday just to go see what was out there, and the curbing's there, and it looks like it's ready for a launch.
It's not where I wanted it.
Are there contractor meetings going on still or?
Weekly, and they're going to go in. Their next step now is, see, the way it sets up now, if we have a big rain, everything that is in that water area is going to the pit. So all that's in place. They're going to go ahead and place the curb and gutter. That'll be the next step. They're going to try to get all the curb and gutter installed and then come in and do the main line.
When's the ribbon coating?
Yesterday.
Thanks.
But as far as days, we're, I mean, they are on target.
You have a report on asphalt?
Clot's bid. You approved the acceptance of this bid, but we went ahead and sent it to legal. And basically, this is a nine-mile project going from Big Low to Jenny Barker. It's a one-inch overlay, or a one-inch mill with a two-inch overlay. And what that does, that one-inch mill takes it down to profile. It helps profile that road for the two-inch to go on top of. I've talked to Victor about timing with the high-risk resolution paint job coming to town. I would like all our asphalt to be complete before the paint jobs start. So there is some back and forth there. Victor thought the earliest, and we have not done a, as soon as we get the contract done, then we can do an early start date with Victor, but Victor thought it would be mid to late June before he could get started. High-risk rural road with Mr. Riggins says they can't guarantee on timeframes yet because they have a lot of projects going on at the same time. So it kind of depends on where they're at on their sweep with their projects. So, but the project, but the amount, the bid amount is still 1.2 million, 50% BRMP, 50% special highway. Questions?
Dwayne?
I just have an observation. It seems like all our major road millings like that take place during weed harvest.
No, weed harvest takes place during our road.
Oh, it's the other way around. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you're seeking approval. You have a?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to accept the low bid from Clot's end for this bituminous surfacing project.
I'll second.
So actually, you've already accepted the bid on December 21st?
Oh, sorry. I wasn't here, sorry. Oh, so moved.
And who's going to sign the contract, the town board or the chairperson?
Just the chair.
Okay. Then you want to adjust your motion, please?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we allow you to sign the contract with Clot's sand for the bituminous surfacing project.
And my second still stands.
You have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Roger. Board governors, anything that anyone wants to bring to the attention of the board?
My comments with regard to governance are going to take place in the, because there's no action in the work session.
Yeah, we're, our target here is to hit the work session by 10:30. Is that right, Dory? We're doing pretty well.
That's the target, yeah.
That's our target. So, so Dwayne's running a stopwatch over here. So let's turn to our county administrator and get his report.
A few of the projects that I'm working on with various.
Can you pull that down, please, so we can understand? I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. A few of the projects that I'm working on with various staff members, working with Public Works, Roger in particular, on a solution for Sewer District III on some of the challenges that we have in that particular one, as well as the future connection with the, a city project on that one. So we'll be soliciting an engineer to review that, some of the improvements needed prior to the, any type of a connection. Additionally, we're going, assisting on the grant management aspect of it, whether it's with a Sparks grant and/or the Serge's grant or, and the EOC grant that we've received. As you recall, we are also working on the connectivity grant process. We do have a Zoom meeting on that tomorrow. That meeting is designed to provide direction to the recipients of the Spark, or the connectivity grant on the closeout of that, which would be the second-half payment. If you recall, we were awarded just over $1.8 million for the county's connectivity project. So we are looking forward to trying to get that closed out as soon as possible for the second-half payment. Also working with the fiscal committee, county's fiscal committee, on getting back into developing fiscal policies and guidelines to assist the county in the future, and those are just some of the items that I'm working with, with various individuals. So that concludes my report. Subject to your questions.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First was KLPG conference call. There was a whole list of bills that Doug ran down, and I think the one that kind of affects us the most would probably be their talking about changing the use-value appraisal of ag land, which is pretty concerning to everybody because once you open up that process, it's open to lots of things. And so I don't know where exactly, one of the, the thing they wanted to do is get away from the eight-year rolling average on crop values and make it a one-year issue, which would, I think the lack of stability would be greatly increased if we did something like that. Secondly, attended the Fannie County Economic Development Zoom meeting. That was quite interesting. I enjoy listening to Shannon. He covered you up with numbers. Also listened in on part of the KAC countywide Zoom meeting on health initiatives. I'd only stuck around for about 30 minutes. It got pretty dry pretty quick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Clifford?
Chairman, I had a busy week. Was on the KAC conference calls Larry mentioned, KLPG on Friday. Attended the Household Emergency Relief meeting, and we did that website review, and you saw the product of that today. Attended live, actually, the Economic Development meeting. I'm now the liaison for the board, and it was very well done. Toured the Third Street property with Bob Kreitzer, Lana, and yourself. Also toured the Eighth Street property, which I know we're discussing later today in our work session. Drove the Bradshaw property. Won't comment on that since there is an investigation evidently. Visited with Faith Heck at the Nazarene Church concerning their early learning center and their transition to an actual daycare. Toured the new vaccine clinic twice. Made comments on that already. And we had the Compass Mental Health Annual Board Meeting at the Clarion. Thank you.
Thank you. Lon?
No particular meetings, but I am working with Roger and then Roger in turn with Robert with regard to Sewer District III because there are several issues that need to be addressed there in current maintenance because there's having pump issues currently and then the new subdivision that's planned. And then also Roger and I are brainstorming, trying to come up with some ideas to help our trucker friend who was in front of us one time with regard to access to the property he has. And I, I'll follow up with Roger on whether we've made any progress there. I'm, even though I'm not on the KAC board, I'm still in contact with Jay Hall, their general counsel and lobbyist, and we've been working on with regard to the Senate Bill 13, and it's in the House Committee now, and trying to get some variations to that a little bit so it won't burden counties anymore. And then the one thing that just came to mind when you were talking about the eight-year averaging, might have Doug visit with Alan Conroy at Capers. It's a, it's a different concept, but Capers uses a smoothing, they call it a smoothing process, to make sure that things are a little bit more even keel than like this. And I think it would apply to that appraisal process, and maybe Alan can give Doug some input on how do we approach that? How do we promote that as a viable tool? So.
I would take a constitutional view, but Doug would have.
It may, but the smoothing process has worked for Capers on the financial side of it. I think that type of concept would work on the appraisal side. I mean, the, keeping the eight-year is what I'm saying, and give the benefits of that versus the one-year fluctuation. I think it has some viability. Just throwing it out there as a thought, yeah. Thank you.
That's it. Dwayne?
Just two constituent requests to me. First one approached me about possibility of a community fire truck such as Garfield County has in the southwest part of Fannie County. I stuck the chief with that one. He's going to be getting a call from this resident on that potential. There's some issues with that training and operation of that truck if they do go that way. Hopefully, chief can work that one out. The second one was the Beef Empires Days Rodeo Committee. I had a resident or a member talk to me. They're going to have to make a decision on whether they can have their rodeo here in about two, three weeks. So that's going to have to be addressed, just like we did with Santa Sange Gun Club, whether be in an outdoor facility, outdoor event, whether they can have that event or whether that needs to be canceled. But they, they're going to be requesting to get on the agenda with Dory directly to get some input on what they can do or whether they can or cannot hold that rodeo. So that's it. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I'll be very quick. I've had a handful of meetings. You forgot one, Larry. You were a library ex-official member. I attended that with Larry and after, I think, about 11 years on the library board, happily handed the book to Larry. That's been a fun assignment, but he's going to proceed into the future. Had a Fannie County Committee on Aging meeting, and the only report I'll make is that Kathleen Whitley is no longer chairperson. She's been serving in that capacity for two years. We thank her for that. She asked for relief, and so Robert Sparks, a board member, was selected as chairperson. Planning Commission, we had no county items on their agenda, but I did attend that. And then, as has been previously suggested, the exhibition building, we had a tour or two of that with setting up for the COVID vaccinations. Couple Spark meetings, the Thursday meetings, those are interesting. And that's about all I need to report, I think. So if there are no other reports, we need about, probably only need five minutes, but let's ask for a motion to go into executive session for non-elected personnel for 15 minutes, and then if we're back early, we're good for us and we'll convene. Does that sound like a workable deal?
And I would make that motion, but who do we include other than the commission?
We're going to include the county administrator and the county commission.
Okay.
Is that it?
Including Robert, I would so move.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, and we'll return to this room no later than 10:28, and hopefully before then. So there we go.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry about that, ma'am. Can you hear me now? We're out of executive session and no action was taken. Is there anything else to come before the board in the, in the setting of a regular commission meeting before we adjourn and go to a work session? And we'll officially adjourn this meeting until, next meeting is the 16th on Tuesday due to President's Day. And with that, we'll reopen as a work session, the Fannie County Commission meeting, and we'll see what we have here first on our agenda. I see county survey review.